Good evening, it is 5:15 this Wednesday evening, October 5th, and this Carroll City Council is now in session. Would you all please join me and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here tonight and kind of getting the ball rolling on tonight's business. Roll call, all are present. Under Reports, we have, first is to accept the city manager resignation and a copy of his letter is attached and in our packet. Should I hand it over to you, Mike?
Mayor and council, it's been a real honor and political privilege to have served the great community of Carroll. You know, it is, it's hard, you know. I've really enjoyed my time here in Carroll. It really is a special community and I just, I thank the council for the opportunity I've had here. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council has this evening.
Don't all go at once. You know, we, I'm speaking on my behalf, but I think the rest of the council would join me in saying thank you for your six years and dedication to the city of Carroll. You have served us exemplary, time and time again. I made a comment last week how I know that my learning curve, starting from the bottom of the basement, has been greatly accelerated and at warp speed, I believe I called it, and much in part to all of the staff, but much in part to you. You're the one that I leaned on and you're the one that allowed all of the dumb questions and you answered them without even, you know, a wink. And Mike, Carroll's loss is Johnston's gain. And we know and trust that you will serve them well. And like I said in a meeting with Mike just this morning, I'm keeping him in my cellphone because that's where all my friends reside. Okay?
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything for Mike?
I just, I don't know how good the public know, I don't know how the public knows how good you really are. You know, that's a hard thing to perceive. I can relate to when I go to these district, regional and state meetings and I see so many people that are at these gravitate to Mike, other city managers, other city council people, you know, and you know, the others that are there and ask him questions. What do you think? What would you do? And I've been in roundtable discussions and a lot of cities, you know, there might be a dozen of us in there and it always comes back to him. What would you do? You know, do you have an answer for this? And, you know, you're talking to not, you're talking to a lot of professional people that are in this business that ask him what to do. So that, you know, that just shows me how good he really is when you're at the State Iowa Meeting and they're all asking Mike.
Anyhow, I would just request the city accept my resignation effective January, or November 3rd.
Anybody else? Can we think about it? That's what I told him. And it's effective November 3rd, so it's going to be a pretty fast 29 days here. So is there a motion to that effect? Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept Mike Pogie Weaver, the city manager's resignation letter that his resignation will be effective November 3rd. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Shrek?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Or Nero?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. So the next item of business tonight, as Mike has laid out for us, is just a discussion with some attachments about the city manager vacancy. And he's got a memo in our packet. And Mike, I will once again turn it over to you to discuss essentially about three items that the council needs to give direction on.
Thank you, Mark and council. So I know we were kind of maybe looking to do this on Monday, but the reason we're having this special was some discussion that the council wanted to start jump-starting this and I really understand that sentiment and agree with it. But I think there's kind of three questions I laid out that the council needs to consider. And first, I think is more, it's just an opportune time that, you know, when there's a transition, I think any organization needs to ask the question, do you want to continue the path that we've been doing? I mean, certainly would say you should have a manager or administrator assist in the day-to-day operations of the city operations. But I also included Chapter 20, which is our city code of ordinances and kind of lays out what the duties and responsibilities are for the city manager. So I think it is always prudent to ask these questions at a time of a transition. The second question is, does the council want to consider an interim manager? I know previously there was, Gerald was here for about 20 years. You know, he announced his retirement. The city at that point started the process while he was still here to look and get a city manager in place. He left into July and came onboard middle of October. So it was about a two and a half month gap. Now, in the world of the city manager and just operations of the city administration, summer or fall tends to be a little bit slower time. Not to say we're slow, but just operationally, it is a slower time of time a year. With this transition, you know, the city hasn't begun the search process. And so we will go out to do a search. We'll determine how we're going to do that in a little bit. But it will likely take five to six months to go through that search process and actually onboard a replacement individual. You will, you'll usually start and you have to develop a profile. You're going to advertise that for four to six weeks. You then will go through a process of narrowing down, doing background investigation on the various candidates. You'll have to set interview times. You may have, you may have a time where the council will actually have a large pool that you will interview and consider, narrow it down, and then you'll have to invite the candidates in. So there's a lot of delays that occur during that process. And then, once you actually select administrator or manager, you will then have the potential, if they currently have a position, they likely will have an employment contract somewhere like I did. And you have to provide at least a 30, sometimes a 60-day notice. And so it's just going to take some time to get an individual on. And I think with the time of year, with budget, and then also with union negotiations, my recommendation, and like I stated in the memo, I would suggest there is an interim in this case be appointed to kind of have those day-to-day operations continue and be part of that decision-making process. And it's not to say that there won't be some opportunities or shouldn't be some opportunities where the mayor and the council step up and do some roles, but I think you do that. There's going to be just a lot of decisions, especially in the budget area, as staff works to prepare that, you just need that person that has that authority to make those day-to-day decisions. So that's at least my recommendation and the council can do with it what they wish at that point. Third item that the council will need to consider is, do you want to do the search, doing it internally or use an external search firm? My recommendation would be to use an external search firm. Now, I know there's been some discussions, do we do a full RFP? I know when I told Mark last week that I was leaving, he did provide me direction to start reaching out to firms. So we've kind of jump-started some of that process. Now, the council wants us to do a full RFP process, go out and get a search proposals, that way we can do that. It will take a few weeks. I'm in a position now that we will likely present three, if not four, proposals at the next council meeting for the council to review. And I do think there'll be some good options in there. There'll be some in-state firms, there's also one national firm. I do think this will be a national search that the council will go through of trying to find a replacement. But just looking for some direction of, do you want to do a formal RFP process? Again, that'll introduce a little bit of delay or just doing invited proposals if that's acceptable. And if it's invited proposals, I do believe that will be something that we can have at your next council meeting. Budgetary impacts, obviously with the vacancy, you know, there's going to be some savings with the city manager's salary that you will not pay out, both in interim and in the search proposal. A search firm will easily be able to be accommodated within the savings the city will have on salary savings with the city manager. I also would highlight, in the memo, I did include some information. There's a wealth of information that the International City County Management Association, or ICMA, puts out there about city managers and searches and things to think about. So there's a web information, or web link there that if you guys choose to go out and look at it, it may be a good resource for the council to consider. So with that, we're just asking tonight for some discussion and next steps so that we can prepare that information for your next meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council has this evening. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you, Mike. What's the council's wishes? Should we just kind of go down these three items, starting with one, two, and then three, and kind of discuss them? And that way we can give the staff the direction that they need. The first one, once again, is, I think this is an easy one, but let's have the discussion. Does the city council wish to continue to be served in this fashion with the city manager type of government?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I think we're most in agreement, everybody?
Right.
We could get into some localities if you didn't have a professional in it.
Yeah, yeah, so we're all on the same page there?
Yep.
Okay.
And certainly, if I can interject real quick, I would encourage you guys all to take a look at Chapter 20 and think about the duties that are in there. I mean, it's always that opportunity. And if you choose to do a search firm, they're going to also help you through that discussion if you so choose. I'm glad to hear that you want to continue with professional management. I think it is advantageous to the city and I'd even tell you that every community, all of our peer cities, have either a city administrator or city manager. So I think there's a track record of that. But do look at Chapter 20, it's a good opportunity for the council.
And that's our code, that's not the state's or anybody else's. It's our code, so we own it. No, ever since I've lived here, we've been served by very capable city managers and if it ain't broke, is the way I see it. So, good, okay, so question number one is answered. We want to find another city manager. Now, I'd like to throw it out for discussion. Does the city council wish to appoint an interim city manager? And what is the council's thoughts there? Pros, cons, and in-between?
I think we need to, given the three reasons Mike laid out, preparation of the budget, upcoming union negotiations, and then in addition to that, the all the workload, just managing the day-to-day give-and-take, oversight, et cetera, all the things laid out in Chapter 20. I think we need that. We did that when Gerald retired. And I think we just need to move seamlessly toward our next hire. And that would help us. I think it would be to everyone's advantage.
That was a question I had, you did so when Gerald retired?
Yes.
Okay.
Didn't we?
I didn't think you did, but I went back and looked and-
Laura took over, did you?
Well-
I worked with the mayor to kind of keep us moving through stuff, yeah. But we never officially appointed anybody.
Oh, I just remember you're working with him, okay.
Laura did probably the workflow.
I apologize, I apologize.
But the period of time is going to be a lot longer here.
Right, five months versus a couple.
Yeah, he gave his notice and they started looking. Well, we just found out now. So if we don't do an intern, what's the other option?
Laura?
Well, we need to know what the-
The department heads would still be in charge of doing everything that they do on a day-to-day basis anyway.
I think we need to know the other option is, that's what it would be, the department heads?
Yeah.
Can we follow suit with what she just said? Just have Mark and Laura work together?
Yeah, I think, I think the department heads are so good at what they do that they're capable of dividing and conquering. And I've shared this with Mike, so. And then, again, at the same time, you know, I have maybe just a concern about perhaps, which is light, but maybe showing favoritism or something like that that might not be well-received, which is, you know, probably an aside. And then, I really truly believe that I can and should step up and be available. I don't miss a whole lot yet. My health is going to be stable, so I feel like I'm going to be available and would relish the opportunity to be able to step up just a little bit more.
Can you explain what you want to step up to do?
I think as, in an executive fashion, say for an example, a lot of what Mike has to do is, he's like the contact person here, instead of the mayor. And, you know, whether it be CADC or Chamber or a business owner or housing or say another, you know, a developer comes to, you know, wants to find out a little bit more. You know, Mike's the one that pretty much takes those calls and then, you know, flushes it through the process. And certainly enlists department heads and on a necessity basis too. And again, you know, I think that that's something that I can manage for three to five months. And quite frankly, I'm equipped to do so. I've run multimillion-dollar car dealerships and I don't have the municipal prowess that he does, but that's what the staff does have. And so, you know, I don't want to necessarily influence the council. I'm just putting it out there that when Mike first suggested this and I kind of looked to see what we did last time and I didn't see where we did either, and we survived. And I just, I would be a little bit more, more open to trying to step up. And you know what? If I can't, if I'm not doing a good job in a month, two months, whatever, council can say, "Mike, you're lousy at this. Let's get ourselves an interim manager and, you know, finish out." And I'm a big boy, I can take, you know, criticism. If I'm not performing well, then so be it. We can name one if it doesn't work out. But that's just my thoughts, right or wrong.
So explain your relationship. Mike recommended an existing department head and given the three reasons he laid out, and I'm not questioning what you just suggested, I'm just thinking, given those three reasons and especially the budget and the negotiations, none of you have been in on the negotiations before. And I'm sorry my memory failed me, but I thought Laura had been, I don't know, informally appointed, I was wrong. But given this situation and Laura knowing the process that for the six years she, Mike, the department heads went through, I, if she would be willing, I would suggest that Laura jump in as interim city manager because she is not an elected official. I just see a conflict of interest with an elected official serving as an interim city manager. But to address your point, Mark, since Laura is, we need a point person, especially for the budget. If Laura would consider that interim position, then you two work out and I could see you working out something where you could fulfill some of the roles you just laid out. I believe you would do a good job. So I could, I could see the two of you working together. But again, given the length and the responsibilities at this time of year, I personally would like to see if she would take it, Laura, in that position because I know how valuable she is in working with the department heads and pulling everything together. So there's my thought.
Couple of things, just to make a point, not counterpoint, but just points. I am rather skilled in union negotiations. I handled them at the county for four units. Gene Miners and I were the point people for several negotiations. And I'm not saying I've got all the answers there, but it, I am rather experienced at that.
Well, and there again-
And then Galloway, of course.
Right.
You know, he's, he's the guy we lean on, more importantly, anyway.
But there again, there's where you two could coordinate and cooperate.
And even if we do name her, I'm still going to be available for you 24/7.
Oh, we would want you to be-
That doesn't mean I'm not, I'm just saying that, you know, I'd be available.
And that would be good, given your experience.
Laura, are you willing?
Yes.
My only worry is I don't want to burn you out either.
Why would we not just hire the interim? I don't understand if that's a recommendation and we know how full your plate is.
Are you saying like bring somebody in from the outside?
Absolutely, yeah.
The only, only concern I would have with that is you bring somebody in that doesn't clash with everybody else and you may lose somebody else that's valuable. That's my-
Well, that's our job to help find that person. I would think that we should all fit together. I mean, you know what I mean? I don't think somebody just gets to handpick somebody and sit them in that chair and say, "You have the job for interim." I don't think that's how it goes anyway. That's, that's our choice. So, I, you do, he does an awful lot. I mean, that is, that is a long, deep list of stuff to put on your plate as mayor and your plate as financial. It's a lot and this is a really rough time of year. It's end of, I mean, it's not end of year, but you're doing budget stuff. It's, it's a lot different than when we lost Gerald. I mean, I don't know.
Is there firms out there or places out there that have somebody ready to go to move into that seat? I mean, is that something that-
There are, I'm racking my bed brain, right? I mean, there's two different approaches. When I left Swift County, there was a county administrator, probably about an hour away, that had just retired. I reached out to her and asked, you know, would you be interested in serving interim basis? And she did for a few months. And so, you know, that's one approach. You could look for also a retired manager and there are some out there. I'm just kind of racking my brain of someone in this area because you're probably not going to get someone from like councilal office or-
I just worry that they, maybe they're on cruise control either. I mean, I hate to put somebody in there, you pay them X amount of dollars and really have no result out of it.
And also tell you, there is a, well, Gov HR is one that, you know, is doing our classification compensation. They're a firm that I reached out to, to submit a proposal for this. They have a side business that does bring in interim administrator managers. And, you know, typically, if you bring it outside, they're not working full-time. They're usually working, you know, two, maybe three days a week. Counsel kind of, this is the parameters of what we want you to do during that time, not looking to bring new initiatives on during that time, really kind of just trying to steer the boat and keep things flowing. So I mean, that is certainly another option that if council wants us to, you know. One of the things you gotta realize is you have someone in the seat for the next month. And so if there's different directions, we can certainly go look at that and bring back some different proposals and then we can look at more options.
For me, going in that direction, I think it just prolongs the process. Then we're looking for another person. I get what you're saying. And that new person is going to be going to Laura and the department. I mean, that person is going to have to have some kind of a learning curve. I just don't see that that makes it, what we're doing. I mean, our goal is a city manager. I do not see bringing someone in who is going to use our staff as resources, which will burden them. I think we're making the process inefficient versus bringing, appointing someone from the staff. Laura, for instance. And I don't know, when this happened, I started reading articles about what went on when other people have hired recently in other cities in Iowa. And, and there were a couple where they just, they appointed someone on their staff, somebody in-house that is, you know, available, knows what's going on, knows the personalities. And otherwise, we're paying somebody just to fill a chair and they need, they'll be going to people as resources. And to me, that, that just is not a good approach.
Is there any legal localities that your position, that they would know that, you know, we have to worry about some of the stuff that, you know, as a city manager that we don't know? That do we have to worry about legal localities or is that my not worry about?
I mean, I think in any executive position, it's less about the legalities with making sure you're doing the tasks you need to do. I mean, there's always legal issues to worry about and make sure. But I would say any executive professional is going to know what they need to do.
Okay.
So Mike, let me ask you this question over the course of the next couple of months in this. What is the city, what do we have to do as far as stepping up to fill your role right now? With budgets already being done, new ones coming onboard, which we're all going to decide anyway. Laura already knows that. What would the person that's going to step in or do whatever be expected right now? What decisions are we looking for other than, and I personally think we're like on autopilot till the new budget comes out with our department heads coming up. I wouldn't want to burden our department heads with anything else like this because they're already busy enough the way it is. So then who's Laura's backfiller? Who's anybody's backfill as far as their role in a full-time position? So what would be expected fulfilling your role in the next couple of months till we find somebody?
I mean, I think, I think we'll use the budget because I think that's the biggest lift that the city's going to face is there's a, there's a single budget that has to be put together. And when it gets presented to council, there's hard decisions that get made that has to come together. And there's cuts that are made that a department may not want to make.
Right.
Now, I will tell you, two years ago is probably about the hardest budget we did. I mean, we spent a lot of time talking about the budget this time, but I think in my mind, this was easier budget this last year than the one two years ago. Because we walked into that one two years ago when it hit my desk and we were a million dollars over budget. We were a million dollars more than what I was going to present to the council. And, you know, it took a lot of discussion, you know, we brought in staff. I remember sitting around the table and, you know, I'm not one of just saying, "Well, we're going to cut, cut, cut." And these are the decisions I'm making as city manager. It was a lot of talking through staff. But you need to have that person that ultimately is, who's making that decision on what's going to get presented to the council. Because you don't, the council doesn't want to receive a budget that isn't going to go anywhere. You need to have those hard decisions. So I think that's the biggest issue the council is going to face. And then, you know, if you get into a HR issue, you need that person that's going to ultimately be the one that is, is going to make the hard decision because it happens. I mean, I've had what I would say is two really hard terminations that had to be made and we made the decision within hours. And, you know, who's going to be that person that's going to lead that? You know, there are some, some departments, like the police department that does most of the HR internally because that's the way state codes are laid out. But there's other departments where, you know, it's the city manager that makes that decision. And so I, it's a, what I would say is, most cities when they're, when they're in this situation, someone's getting appointed as the interim. And it's not looking to make big policy changes or steer the ship in a different direction. It's just there's those day-to-day questions that come up every day that is maybe across two departments. You know, it's a, it's an issue that maybe one department doesn't have the sole authority to deal with. Who's going to be the arbitrator and make that decision? So you need, you know, again, you see cities that appoint either an internal person or go out and find an external person to serve that. or go out and find an external person to serve that role, um, and, and do that. So I, I would say it's more unusual not to have an interim than to have an interim.
I kind of agree with you. I think we've put our trust into our department heads and allowed them to run our departments very successfully. That why not give it a try for, like you said, a short time? If it's not working, then we come back together and say, Mark, it's not working. And at that time find an interim. But if he's willing to step up and be the point person for different things within the city, why not allow that?
How do we know we don't find somebody in that, in the next couple of months? Just throwing it out there. I mean, there's no time limit on this thing. You said it could be up to five months, could be up to 30 days. You don't even know the candidate's out there.
One of the things I worry about is we're entering a housing thing right now. And you spent a lot of time on answering a lot of questions that come in on housing. And I'm not sure who's going to do that. We got Overland Park, you know, they're going to start digging in the spring. We gotta have somebody to be able to be around here to be able to do that.
Spring? That's five months away, right?
Yeah, but look at all the incentives we just put out.
We, meaning council.
Yeah. So there's, there's questions that those people, you know, when they, they call in, want to know information. So we gotta have somebody be able to answer those questions too.
Is that Mike? Do you answer those questions or is somebody else answering?
It's, it's been me. In fact, this, this week alone, I've had an individual that's looking to buy four lots in town to do housing. So it, I will tell you, the housing incentives has spurred a lot of discussion. It's, it's getting what we want.
Mark, have you been, I mean, haven't you been kind of involved in that process as well?
Well, yeah, I mean, as, as much as the mayor needs to be, I mean, Mike clearly has designed the whole thing. I, I can think back to the early stages when we were talking about, you know, we made a decision, you know, does government have a role in this to begin with? And, you know, we moved on from that into shaping it into what it is today. And I remember that night, you know, that, you know, we talked about it as a council. And, you know, I remember saying, I don't have a better idea than what this is and how we're funding it and the sustainability of it all. I mean, it was really Mike that, you know, put the thing together. But I think it's safe to say he bounced a lot of things off me, which appropriately so. And then, you know, all of you as well. So, you know, Mike's, Mike's contact information is everywhere on the website. For, for more information, contact Mike, 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 Mike and Mike, you know, and, and I get that. But I'm just saying that at a certain point, you know, I think you just turn and open up the email to me, you know? And, uh, I think we can get along that way. But sometimes my ego gets the best of me, so.
Laura, how much have you, how much involvement have you had in the whole housing? Not as much as obviously what Mike has had, yeah. Or probably not as much as the mayor.
I can see where it could get really tricky, you know, when, when the department heads have their individual budgets. And then they say, all right, here's what we want to float, like you were referring to earlier. And then as Mike and I talked about earlier this morning, you know, he, he, he writes a really great memo. When you open up that budget book, you know, that memo gives all the highlights to things. And it's a bit of a review, but it's also a, a sneak peek in what's ahead. And, um, I couldn't write anything that eloquently or that comprehensive that he does. We were joking that it doesn't need to be a four or five-page diatribe, but for the most part.
Nine-page this year.
It was at nine-page? Is that what it was? I only read four or five.
I vividly remember him saying, it's not going to be very long this year.
I definitely.
Vividly remember that, yeah.
This year was unique, just I think with COVID, I think there was a lot of things that was important just from a.
Yeah. So I, I, I'm truly a little divided on it. I mean, I understand the advantages of it. I truly, truly, truly do. And, um, if you're willing to do it, you know, I, here I go playing favorites. But I mean, you're, by my estimation only, I mean, you'd be the one most equipped to do it. Mostly just because of your.
What time of the year?
Well, I mean, everything funnels through the clerk's office, right? I mean, it's a little bit like the auditor's office. I mean, everything, it's kind of the hub. And so, you know, I, by my nine-month, 10-month estimation and observations, I mean, you certainly have the most, you know, capability in which to be able to serve. So, um, I, I am really mixed on it, but I would like to give it a try. But I, I'm certainly going to take the council's decision here and, and that's what we move ahead with.
Mark, I think you're a very active mayor with your office hours. You've started column and so on. I just see that you and Laura could work together very effectively. And I don't see the housing right now as, as much as the time of the year that Laura just pointed out. And it, to me, if we're going to have an interim city manager, that means you do the city manager's job day-to-day. And I know during the budget process negotiations, sometimes we have special meetings. You can get into, I don't know, my coming hours a week. Uh, it, it's when your hours increase. And the, a city manager is here day in, day out managing, um, the day, day-to-day supervision and operations. And yes, the, the department heads, um, do very well. And a lot of times they're on autopilot. But, but again, I, I would feel more comfortable, given the time of year, if we appointed Laura, if she would take it, but allow Mark to be actively involved and for them to work out the relationship and how they would divide responsibilities. I honestly trust them both to be, uh, professionals and work out something that would be in the best interest of the city and, and what needs to get done at this time of year.
Laura, what happens if you take on this interim position? What happens to the 40 hours of work that you do every week? Who then takes on those responsibilities?
It would, we would all have to work together and try to, I would spread out some of my duties maybe to some other staff members as well.
Would they be having to do some overtime then?
Possibly. I don't know yet. Obviously it's, we're all trying to figure this out together, right? And where to go from here. Um, yeah, there'd be longer days, longer weeks, but that's to be expected with the budget process too. And, and like Mike had mentioned, I don't feel like this role also is one that you're going to completely steer the ship in a different direction. It is trying to get you to the next person, um, knowing that there's a lot of stuff that's going on right now, especially in the city clerk finance office with the budget coming up. So yeah, it, it will be extra. It would definitely be extra.
I'm going to ask a question because I know when I came on board, some of the discussions we had early on, regardless of there being an interim or not, do you see your workload increasing without a city manager in place?
Yes.
And in reality is, I think there'll be a lot of work regardless, that's going to have to get shifted to other locations. And frankly, there's going to be a lot of duties that the city manager has, is a fair statement, that are going to go on your shoulders regardless. Cause it's, and, and there are things, there are roles that need to happen. You know, like one of the things is if you read the mayor, uh, section of the city code, you know, the mayor's the chief negotiator for the city. Um, and so he'll be, and, and the last mayor was very intimately involved in union negotiations. You know, because that's the role that's set out in city code. Um, you know, we have some of our segregation duties where I have to sign certain documents that Laura signs just so that it's getting to eyeballs. You know, when we're transferring money, when we're, um, approving certain bills. Well, when the city manager was gone, Laura still had to sign off on those and the mayor became the, the second set of eyes. So there, there's definitely areas that everyone's going to have to step up. That's just reality. Um, but it, but it is going to place some burden on someone in the staff. Um, and then like I, yeah, I'll just leave it at that. I think, I think there's, there's just a lot of burdens that are going to be placed on a lot of staff.
Re- regardless?
Regardless.
Okay. Either way.
That's what you're saying.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's kind of my reasons for, you know, what I was saying earlier. We just all gotta row a little harder.
Well, I'm okay with Laura and you, Mark, working together and you be the intern. And, and you're going to be timed and you're going to have extra hours too. And I think you should guys, should be compensated for that time too. I don't know what that amount is.
Not necessary for me. Thank you. I tried getting out of the first 400 bucks.
Technically, I don't think we can.
That was a real advice, yes.
That's what I found out. Nah, I, yeah.
I think if Laura is named, I think Mark would be the contact person on the housing side. I think that'd be good. I don't think, that's something Laura should have to deal with on top of everything else. That'd be my input on it.
There's probably a lot of other things right now that we don't know that you guys will know.
I mean, working, you know, working with CDC, things like that. I mean, like just internal things you, you take care of.
Some of us council members, we can step up, you know? I'm retired, I can help out minor things.
And Mark, if you needed anything at all, um, because you really have added to your responsibilities, uh, with the things I mentioned. I think any of us, when we could, we'd be happy to, or provide information or whatever. So.
What I would suggest is, I mean, a decision doesn't have to be made tonight. We've introduced the discussion to council. Uh, we'll bring this back for Monday. We'll put it on as a discussion item for Monday and continue, uh, the discussion. Does that sound fair?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, the, the third item, um, again is, uh, do you wish to conduct a search? And do you want an internal or an external search firm to assist with it? Um, and then if you want an external search firm, is just invited proposals acceptable? Or do you want a formal RFP to go out?
Well, we see numbers both ways, what that will cost the city.
Yeah, I mean, I'll have at least three, if not four proposals. Um, I'll tell you the range between probably 15 and $25,000. Um, I think you'll see, um, different advantages. I mean, it's a professional service, so it does, it's not based on low bid. The council can look at the proposals and decide who is best qualified to, to serve the city in that capacity. And then, uh, go forward and select. Um, I have, I will ask if, if the council says invited proposals is acceptable. I will ask the, uh, four firms, I, I, I believe we'll have four proposals. Um, I'll ask the four, uh, firms to be available by Zoom at the next council meeting. So if there's questions about a specific proposal, you can ask those questions. Um, and then you can select the firm at that point.
And Mike, uh, given your experience, um, I know we will work as far as job qualifications. But I, I would expect all of them to give us a timeline. So do they usually give it, offer a timeline? Okay, good. That would be a part of it. Thank you.
And will they also have, um, I mean, a job description's, you know, pretty clear. It's really wide. But won't they also have and provide for us like minimum qualifications and then ideal qualifications?
So th- those will be, that'll be something that they'll work with. So once you select a firm, they're not going to, at this stage, they're not going to say, here's a job description. They're going to meet, they're going to want to meet, whatever firm gets selected. They're going to want to meet with the council members and talk to you guys, you know, what's, what's good, what's bad. Um, I remember when I was at the county, uh, we had the, the search firm come in. I was still working there. Uh, they came to a council meeting. I actually packed up myself, stuff and left because there may be something that they didn't like about me. And I wanted the council, the board of supervisors to have the freedom to say, Mike did really good here. Mike didn't do good here. This is what we're looking for the next administrator or manager. Uh, so I think that's really important that you guys have that frank dialogue with the search firm. It doesn't hurt my feelings because I don't do everything right. You know, I'm not, I'm not perfect. And so, uh, they'll, they'll have that dialogue. Once they have that dialogue, they're going to help, uh, develop that next, uh, job description. If there's changes that need to made, be made, they're going to develop that next position profile that will go out to the public, that individuals that may be interested in applying will see. Um, and then they'll, they'll also kind of narrow down some of the candidates. Cause they may get, they get 30 applications. You guys aren't going to want to look at all 30 applications. Cause you'll get someone that has a high school degree that's a plumber that may not be suitable for this position. And so they'll narrow, they'll kind of get you maybe down to 10 applicants. Uh, they'll get presented to council. Then you guys will narrow it down to three applicants that you'll actually bring in, uh, to, to interview. So, uh, it, it, it takes, it takes time to go through that process. Um, but yes, they'll provide a, a timeline, uh, but then they'll help you develop that position description.
Okay, so we will, uh, just to back up. So we will have, all of us will have input on our expectations regarding qualifications, personal, um, you know, qualities, et cetera, their background. That, so we will all be given a chance to, they will not give us like a one-size-fits-all.
And, and I'll tell you, the firms will also probably want to have some meetings with stakeholders in the community. Cause that's also important. I mean, we want to serve our external as much as we want to serve internal. And so that'll be also an important avenue.
Okay, thank you.
I told Mike, I said, can't we just tell him, find us a mini Mike, you know, and we'll be good? But he said they don't exist, so. Cut, they broke the mold, right?
Well, you know, I know the police department got a cloned dog, so.
Well, hey, there's, that's a thought. That's a thought.
That's right. Oh, God.
Um, can I ask, just, I mean, I, I'm, it's a public meeting, but it, it, without sharing names or in confidence, have any of you had anybody ask you about the job? I mean, with an interest?
No.
No? The bird's making no comment. Yeah, I, I, I have, and I was a little surprised.
I have too.
Yeah, and I was, I was a little surprised, well, a little surprised by all three of them. But, um, I mean, really capable people, but again, at the same time, you know, really, who we're looking for is really quite unique, I think. But we will have to, you know, if we only get one app, we'll have to broaden our spectrum a little bit. But yeah, I've, I've had, and, and all of them local, you know? I mean, I haven't had anybody, you know, from, you know, a city manager elsewhere say, hey, mayor, you know?
I have.
Okay, so you, it's, yours has been.
I remember I was at a state meeting.
Well, I, I, you know, I, I meant to ask you that the other day and I just, I forgot to ask. But, um, I, you know, I, I think we're going to be, um, I think it, this is a, this is a good stop. And I, I would like for it to be a, a final destination for somebody. Um, but, um, I, I'm optimistic that we'll have some good applications. So once again, back to the question, is everybody in agreement? We use a search firm? And are we good not RFPing, see what we got? If we don't like them, you know, we could probably RFP then. But I mean, we'll, we'll see what we got as early as Monday.
Yeah.
And, um, maybe take it from there pretty much. I liked that, uh, that two-pronged approach thing that you sent me, the dual process where, you know, we use a search firm, but then we also use our own networking capabilities and, you know, things like that to maybe cast a little wider net or something like that too. So, uh, that, that can certainly be done the way I see it. So they were already calling me, so I'm not making any, I'm not even making any calls and they're calling me, so. Um, okay, um, is that it? Is that it for that? Did you get the direction you need?
If there's any, yep, if there's any other questions.
And we'll try and make a firm decision on the interim on Monday. Just go ahead and place it on the agenda.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay, does that help? Okay.
Well, I prepare a resolution to that effect, or at least have blanks in a resolution to that effect.
Um, it, it would certainly require a resolution if it's gonna involve someone's pay, correct?
Yep, so I'll, I'll prepare a resolution with blanks and then, you know, that way the council has flexibility to take action on it Monday if they so choose.
Okay. Will there be, I mean, if we're gonna compensate for it, will there be a dollar amount attached to that? Is that a fair question to ask?
Yeah, I mean, we can, eh, what I would say is I'll still put blanks in a resolution. I'll have some narrative in a staff report that talks about it.
Okay. Anything else on that, all of you? Okay, well, we're gonna move ahead and, um, there's no other reports or anything, so we're looking to adjourn. Is there a motion to that effect?
A motion.
Okay, a motion and a second to adjourn. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Or narrow?
Yes.
Dirbs?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Space?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.